Jordan, could I ask you a question real quick about tomorrow?
Jordan, can you hear okay? Okay. A council writer or member writer wanted to know if she could ask you a question about tomorrow.
Um, is there, there was some talk about having screens there and I'm not sure if we're there yet. For the meeting tomorrow night and I was just wondering about like bringing my own laptop. Or printing out some of the packet or the agenda. Do you have any thoughts or suggestions on that?
Yeah, you know what? I apologize. It has gone really in and out on my laptop. So I'm going to switch over to my desktop to hopefully stabilize my internet connection.
Okay. And we can talk about it later.
Nicole's question, if you can answer that, that'd be great.
Did Jordan pass the baton over to me?
Yes.
Member Crater, could you repeat yourself really quick? I'm sorry.
For the meeting tomorrow night, at one point, there was some talk about having screens. But I'm not sure if we're there yet. And any suggestions on bringing our own laptops or if we wanted to look through the agenda still during the meeting?
So the first part about screens, the equipment has been ordered, they will not be installed for several months.
Okay.
So what we're working on is having you be able to see a screen. There's a TV screen setup. That all the counselors can see. And then there's a projector. And as far as bringing your own personal laptop, I would defer to Jordan. On that, I know that we are struggling to gain internet access at. Is this?
Jordan, I, I, I would suggest that we just bring hard copies of the packet until we get to that point. Just. I mean, I think it's up to each member or counselor to choose whether or not they want to subject their laptops to the public record that way. And so that choice becomes a choice if we have hard, hard copies, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. And I'll bring hard copies of both agenda packet as well as the PowerPoint slides, just in case that goes awry tomorrow as well.
We also used to have little tablets. And are those tablets still available? And are they even, you know, do they work?
I would recommend for us not to use them. They're very old iPads. Were they in use before you went onto Zoom? They were. Okay. I'll go back and take a look, but I know that they're, they're in very bad condition. Some of them have cracked screens and. You know, if they haven't been turned on in two or three years, they might not turn back on. So, but I'll take a look.
And then one of the, the bridges we're gapping is we did place the order for the full equipment upgrade to have hybrid meetings. And we're just trying to, you know, figure out that gap until that equipment gets in our hands. So hoping that couple of months will be a streamlined situation. I will share tonight for the chair, member buyers and member.
Barry Miller.
Primala, thank you, are both out sick tonight.
Okay, so if you are all set, I'll go ahead and open up this meeting. Hector, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Right, so. It's 6:03 and we'll call the Talent Urban Renewal Agency regular meeting of December 6th to order roll call, please.
Member Pranamrav.
Here.
Member Crater.
Here.
Member Pestezo. Vice Chair Clark.
Here.
And Chair Harris Flood.
Here.
I don't believe we have quorum.
We do with Tura, we do.
Oh, yeah, pardon me, pardon me. You'll quorum.
Thank you. Yeah, you're right, Hector. In one scenario, we would not. So that's not far off. Thank you. So. The second item on the agenda speakers heard on non-agenda items. Hector, do you have any request forms?
We have not received any speaker request forms.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar with the financial packet. Anybody have any? Has everybody had a chance to review the financial packet? And if so, are there any questions? Is Tessa here to present the packet or just take questions?
Just to help take questions.
Okay, anybody? I just have one question. I was a little confused by the. The investment recap, the loan recap. And I, I. I can't tell, but I thought we closed, we closed that loan. And it, and, and if it shows that we closed it, I just see, I see interest accruing through 2025 and I, and I was. Really sure we closed it.
So at two, I believe it was two term meetings ago, the board decided to hold on to that loan until we knew that there was no further projects needed at the gateway site.
Okay. So my memory is just inaccurate. Thank you. And I. Yeah, I don't remember that. Maybe I. Don't remember if I was there or not. Okay. Well, good. That's the only question I had. Otherwise, oh, I did have one other question. I noticed that Mike Davis had a tree grant of 1180. And I thought the cap on the tree grants was, was 500. So was that for like multi properties or? Yeah, okay. That was my only other question.
For three different properties.
Great. Well, great. I'm glad, glad to see that he utilized and planted trees. That's, those are my questions. Anybody else? Okay, if there's no further inquiries, I will entertain a motion. Member Panamra.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Member Pranamrav.
Yes.
Member Crater.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Clark.
Yes.
Motion carries, Chair.
Next item on the agenda is item 4.1 proposed revitalization grant program. Steph?
Yes. So as discussed in our last meeting, we are proposing having a revitalization grant program. To help the businesses and commercial properties in the current urban renewal district improve the appearance of and access to and improve the marketability of their businesses. This is a more refined program that what was presented at the last meeting in the agenda packet is both a draft program guidelines and draft application. But all in all, this program would offer up to $15,000 in direct grant funding for eligible projects. And some examples of eligible projects are on the screen. And really, the, the main focuses of distributing grant funds is really to help visually improve storefronts and streetscapes for businesses. Increase access to that business in that location. Help the businesses of that location better support public health and safety, particularly with our COVID-19 world and to address impact from the Alameda fire. That many businesses have reported experiencing such as blistered paint, damaged signs, et cetera. You know, the biggest changes compared to when this was last brought before the board. Is we did some on the ground talking to businesses who might be interested in this program. And really what we heard from businesses right now is that they do not have cash on hand. And that their credit is tapped out as they try to survive the last two to three years with both COVID and the fire. And so with that feedback, you know, we removed the matching program for this grant. Where originally it was designed as a $5,000 grant and folks could match additional money. To increase that amount. We also create an option for a portion of the grant to be released before all invoices are submitted. So this is that there is a business that does not have cash to pay contractors or pay down deposits to have the work started. This is an avenue where they can still participate and apply for this grant and help improve their storefront or their business. I'm also increased the maximum grant size. Talking to some folks who've already gotten estimates in the projects they want to do. They are, it is pricey right now to make any changes, both for landscaping, for painting, et cetera. And so we elevated the max grant size to really help folks either complete a project or at least complete a stage of the project. To a level large enough to make a difference. And because this is such a larger grant size in our beautification program, you know, we'd recommend that the board review the applications on a rolling basis. Or if there's another body that would like to review the applications against the criteria for the grant. And so I am asking for the board tonight is if you have any feedback or would like to see any changes to this program. And with changes or without, if you feel ready to have the Urban Renewal Agency, let this grant go live.
Are there any questions of staff? Council Panamra.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember how much, how much we've budgeted for overall for these grants.
Yeah, so we have over $100,000 budgeted this year. Between both the beautification grant program and any other grant programs you may start. We have used to date this fiscal year, I believe about $6,000 towards a beautification grant program. I expect potentially another $4,000 or $5,000 in that area. So I expect, you know, about 90,000 to be available for a revitalization grant program.
So that would be. Six grants if people took the, the full amount.
Six grants if they took the full amount.
Okay. Thanks.
Good, quick math.
Always count on Eleanor for that. Member Crater?
Yeah, thanks. I love this. I am a little bit new to, I know we have a quorum, but. The half of us are not present about, about that minute. So. Yeah, I'm just wondering about that piece of moving forward. Or if there's a timeline, Jordan, that you need for this. Or if, I don't know, Jordan, if you had heard any feedback from other members of the board.
Yeah, so I had not discussed the specific project with board members beyond its original concept a couple of months ago. I will say from my perspective, if the board approves this, when we would implement it, they probably wouldn't start implementation until January. So if the board wanted to wait to even make their vote till January, that would work well with the timeline as well as voting tonight. So if you would like to, to wait on this vote, that would not impact a rollout of this program.
Anybody else? I have a couple of questions, Jordan. One is, I, I think that I feel pretty comfortable about taking, removing the matching grant requirement. Although I think the intention of this is to help businesses revitalize. And I think there are. There, there's the potential from, from. Getting away from really just revitalization and, and perhaps subsidizing development and. And not, there's a big difference between the two, but, but I think the idea here is to really help businesses. Improve their facades, help them sustain through these difficult times and, and in some cases. Help them recover from damage from the fire, although I can't think of a lot of businesses that are still standing that. Sustained. I think there was some paint damage to some of the businesses on 99, but is there, but that's not in the burn, that's not in the current. Districts. I'm thinking inside the current district. I, I'm, I, you know, it might be me, but I can't think of any businesses that are, that are really. There's two. What are they?
I would, two that I know of for sure, or is the. Where the, those books, the used bookstore is along with the real estate office and the talent gen emporium. That has some history of paint and damaged signs. And then osteopathic business, they lost all of their landscaping to the fire.
Okay, good. That's good to know. But, but I guess where I'm actually going with this is. Having removed the matching funds requirement and still wanting to kind of maintain our intention, I think. Is that I, I would like to see a little language built out in that, in that way that what the intention of this is so that, so that we can. If the board is going to review this or another body, they can understand that the intention is to revitalize. I mean, that's mitigating blight is a very specific thing and. And that and sort of recovering from any fire damage are two things that we, you know, I totally support, but I'd hate to see it get used. To. Misused is all I really need to say. So I wonder if there's, can you imagine building? Some, you know, smithing some, a little more language around the intention of, of this that might guide. And maybe even building that a little bit into the criteria. Does that's?
What I'm, and let me make sure what I'm hearing is what you're saying as I start thinking about ideas for criteria. I'm thinking of a criteria to show that the business does not have funds to do this on their own.
I think that probably, yeah, that, I mean, is, but can we do that? Does it feel like you can do that? I mean, that seems onerous.
I think, you know, what it would be, it'd be more of a, what I'm imagining is kind of more of an honor system or a narrative. Where we ask them on the application, like, please share, you know, why, if your business is financial hardship, or if you're not able to run this project on your own, please share why.
I think that's great. And I think I would also ask, how does this fall under the black description or the recovery description? That, that might be how. And, and I, I like the honor system. I like that suggestion. I think that's friendly. But I do think it gives. Gives everybody an opportunity to, if there's concerns that we have an area that we can. Deep dive a little bit, just in case. But the other thing that I, I recall from the other revitalization, it's been a few years. That there was language that talked about. How many times a building can ask for revitalizations? And if I recall correctly, and I don't know that this even worked good, but. If you owned the building. You could ask for revitalization. And if you were the business and the owner already asked, you could not ask. And so in other words, it was a way of keeping buildings from double dipping or. And I hate that term, but that's, that's really what it boils down to. In some cases where there's several businesses to keep asking for. Revitalization. So I'd like to see maybe some language. That speaks to that, but that is also reasonable. And then also limit the number of times it can be asked for. So I, I would imagine you could probably say the same, same thing with the same language, if that makes sense, like, like. You could ask for one, this limits you to $10,000 to $15,000 a year. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. So you couldn't ask for another one.
So what I'm hearing is maybe putting in the criteria of. Or the guideline around, you know, one grant per property per fiscal year of the program.
Yeah. And I guess I wonder if we need to add any language about prioritizing the owner over the business or the business over the owner. I don't know. I would hate for that to get weird, but. I'll, I haven't, I haven't given that enough thought to, to, to. Talk about it any further, but yeah, I do. I do. I mean, there are some buildings that have several businesses in it. You can see where suddenly the whole 90,000 is gone. And then, yeah, the survey that you took about that, was that a? Was that just a walk around oral survey? Is there any data on that?
No, um, I just took it on myself to reach out to business owners or ones have reached out to us through the beautification grant. To see if there was more funds available to help them.
Did you document that at all?
Um, I did not.
Okay. I don't have any heartburn about that, but I, I would ask that if we do that moving forward in any context that we, we add. Some documentation to the record about it.
Great.
Survey or whatever, you know. I don't want to make it hard, even just a narrative from whoever does the. Does the inquiries. Okay, I think that's it for me. I'm so glad to see this. Thank you. I know businesses are waiting for it and. There's a couple, couple downtown that can really use it, that want it, you know, don't, I don't mean to sound insulting, but. I think it's, it's going to be a great program and I really appreciate that you worked on it.
Absolutely. So if you all is bored, don't mind. I would love to recommend. Not to put on this tonight, but let me go ahead and incorporate some of these changes and bring it in front of hopefully the larger board in January. Beautiful. Okay, Chair, I'm ready for a four point when you are.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. I, I got to reading what you had, what you pulled up. A bright shiny object, little distraction going on there. Item 4.2 is update to the gateway transitional housing program staff.
Yeah. So just to inform the board, access has declared the official intent to take over the gateway to additional housing program. They are currently working with both the state and with us to figure out how that transition would work. If all goes smoothly, the goal is to have that transition away from Red retreat and to access occur on January 1st. And just to remind the board, the way that this is being structured or is being structured, pardon me. Is Tura is going to go forward with purchasing the trailers. And then we will lease the trailers and land to access to run the transitional housing program. I am currently working with agency lawyers to draft that lease agreement. Because of this tight turnaround, I am asking the board to preemptively. Support my draft and execution of a lease agreement with access for use of that site. Or we could schedule a meeting in a few weeks to approve it once it's fully written, if that is a better comfort level for the board. And what my goal is, I would want that lease, you know, drafted and signed prior to January 1.
Any questions or comments for Steph? Uh, Member Clark?
Yeah, what would the?
Yeah. What would the, uh, the term of this, uh, contract agreement be for how, for how long and, and what's the, um, what is the language or, or, uh, language you're thinking about in terms of when it would or could be terminated?
Yeah. Yeah. So there's two, we're discussing two stipulations. One is when the conditional use of the property is no longer allowed, or when there are no longer wildfire survivors that are needing conditional housing, whichever of those occurs first. Um, so as a reminder, the gateway site is able to be established through the executive order that has, um, temporary emergency accommodation executive order is what allows us to have that traditional housing in a zone that typically wouldn't allow it. Um, and so as long as that continues for, um, we can continue the gateway traditional housing program.
Any other comments or questions? Um, I have, I have a comment. Um, so, um, hard lessons learned and to some degree, as I say, I prefer seeing the lease before we approve it. Um, just, uh, I, I, we're under new leadership and, and I have a lot of faith in our new leadership. So please don't hear me differently, but, um, it were lease agreements in particular, I, I think it, uh, I'd personally like to have an opportunity to, to look at it. Um, I, but of course I'll respect the decision of the board. Uh, member Clark and then member Panamorif.
Yeah, I, uh, I concur with that. I think that's, um, I feel most comfortable with that as well. I wonder, trying to remember, um, if we, uh, is there a possibility that we could do a tour meeting before the second council meeting of the month? Do we have that time open?
So I cannot guarantee that the lease would be ready by then. Um, if we are to delay, it would likely end up being a meeting in between Christmas and January, um, that I will call to have that lease reviewed by the board.
Okay.
Member Panamorif?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we could go ahead and improve it tonight and then just have it, um, emailed to us for review and to provide, you know, feedback, um, if needed, if there were, you know, decisions to be made as a board, we could, you know, potentially look at revisiting that. Cause I, I don't want to set us up for, uh, a last minute meeting or put you, put you under the gun. Cause you want this site, it'd be ideal to sign this January, beginning of January, right?
If, if all other things work, yes, we do want to sign it before January one. Um, though there are a lot of pieces, you know, with trying to contract with the state. You know, my preference would be, um, if the board would like to see the lease agreement, that we just have that in the public meeting space rather than via email. And we can just make it a quick, quick meeting. Um, I may assign, um, an interim person to run that meeting if I'm not available that week between Christmas and January. Um, but we can make it a painless process if possible.
Emma Panamorif?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the ability to get a quorum.
Hmm.
That's, that's what I'm afraid of happening. So, uh, so it seems like what, what we want is, you know, we're, we're, we could approve the idea that we want, you know, to check, um, you know, check the language of the lease in some way. I'm wondering if, is there a way that we can like, uh, if we can, um, kind of verbalize that tonight and just make it part of the motion? Or, you know, like subject to, we could even just do it subject to review by the mayor. Um, and the, or the chair and the vice chair, uh, and then you could just handle it that way.
I think I would love, um, any and all feedback tonight as I'm actively working with our, our attorney and with access to create the scope of the lease agreement. Um, you know, the other option I'd like to throw out there for you all is, we could, you know, visit the lease at our first January meeting, um, and just ask to have the, the official transfer date to happen after that January sixth meeting. So I would, I've looked, what day is our first meeting? Um, after the third.
Yeah. Alternatively, I mean, uh, I, I do have a lot of faith in our current, um, administration and, um, but also, um, uh, I, I was listening to the public when, when they, um, when they said loud and clear that they want to see us, uh, you know, see us step up our game uh, on oversight and, um, I, uh, I agree with that. I agree with that feedback and, um, I, I guess what I would say, um, alternatively, I would be comfortable with going ahead with this motion and, I mean, we can always, um, well, you, once you sign it, I think we're kind of locked in, but, um, what I'd like to see happen moving forward is for us not to be in a situation where the next meeting it is further out than the execution date and not, not that I'm suggesting for a second that, that, that any of that's intentional, but that's, that's, what's got us hemmed in a little bit is that we want to get it signed before we have a chance to review it. Um, and maybe if we can just, just agree to try to avoid that scenario, uh, moving forward. I, I certainly don't want to cause any difficulty with access, um, getting this signed. Um, you know, the bigger, the bigger picture is, is, um, the management of that site. So, um, uh, you can, but I hope you can see the conundrum that I'm experiencing.
You know, if, if the timing is of great concern to the board, you know, I would be comfortable if, if you all made a motion tonight, um, to draft and execute a lease agreement, um, only in the scenario where quorum could not be reached prior to January one. Um, so that would be if I can get quorum with all of you to review the lease agreement before signing it, we would. Yeah, I admittedly even saying out loud, I don't know if I actually love this idea. It was an idea passing through my head, but, um, I think, you know, hearing the concerns and I do, you know, want to support, um, accountability and board powers. You know, my request or recommendation would be, let's wait and see if I can, you know, move quickly on a lease agreement. It's not a complicated tool. So hopefully it can happen before Christmas. Um, and that way I can get a meeting on our calendars and we can figure out and hopefully reach quorum. Um, and if not, do it as soon to January one as we can.
When is the next council meeting?
December twenty first.
Okay. So the other thing I would encourage you to do is, um, if we don't take action on it, is take a shot at getting it to us on January 21st. That is, um, you know, I realize that's a tall order and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but I, I, I think that leaves that on the table as well, is what I, I guess what I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So let's, uh, the board's comfortable, let's leave this for now and I will work to get a draft in front of you all ASAP.
Now, uh, member Panamorif?
Yeah, I just also wanted to suggest that that, that meeting be via Zoom, especially if people are out of town.
Yeah, we are going to continue to have Turet as a Zoom meeting until we can work out all of the technical kinks, um, down at Town Hall.
Great. So, so we'll make the council deal with all the.
We are making the council be the guinea pigs. Yes.
And we just get to sit back as Turek.
Yeah.
Unless by some miracle, we're able to get it in front of us on the 21st, we could do it. We could just schedule a half hour early, right? And show up a half hour early.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I, that's very accommodating. And again, I just, you know, I'd, I'd like the record to reflect that we've reviewed these documents. Um, even though, as I said, I doubt very seriously that I would have any question, I would have any questions. Um, uh, about your work. So, um, all right. Thanks, everybody. So, uh, we'll move on to, um, we're just, um, really, we're just really concluding some major work here. Sorry. Um, for item number four point three on the agenda is, once I get to the first page of my agenda here. Um, general updates from the executive director staff.
Great. Um, you have my full report in the agenda packet, but just to give you the, the high, the highlights, we have begun our fiscal year 22 auditing process. Um, we have completed and now own the tax lot 2200. Um, as of last week, and so I'll be reaching out to, um, to take next steps with that project. We have purchased all the winterization goods for the travel trailers at Gateway Site and December 17th Rogue Action Center is hosting a winterization workshop for the residents. And then I am, have formally started working with Tom Humphrey for the preparation for an RFP, the permanent development of the gateway site. Um, and the agenda packet kind of outlines the, the steps or processes that we're looking at taking to develop that RFP. Um, so I haven't answered any questions, um, about those updates or any other urban renewal projects. And then I would like to hold a brief discussion to see if the board is open to moving our regular meetings, just to help me balance some capacity load issues.
Uh, okay. Are there any questions or comments about this update? I just have, uh, one question about the purchase of, uh, tax lot 2200. So you've closed on the deal. We own the property. What's the next step?
In the, in the plan? Yeah. So the original, um, intent of purchasing this property was to actually do a land swap with another property owner. Um, so that one of our long-term projects, um, we have the land in place to be able to do that. So since we have posed, I do need to reach out to that property owner, um, and have her review the documents that our lawyer has compiled for a land transfer.
Uh, is any, uh, I, I, I would imagine you would tell, you would have already reported if there was any concerns, but it just sounds like everything's going along quite well.
It has, and I will admit, um, to that land owner has been really great and patient as we've just waited to have, um, official ownership of that, of that property before moving to the next step.
Um, okay. And then my other question is on the preparation of RFP for the permanent development. Can you, can you describe the steps in the, and what you think is the timeline for that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm going to go ahead and pull up the agenda packet to share, cause, um, I have been so focused on rebuild data that I don't want to miss one here. Pardon me. I'm going to get you all dizzy with scrolling. Um, yeah. So kind of first step, and this would really be in partnership with Tom, working for our community development department, is take the recent gateway site feasibility study, um, and other community driven documents regarding the infrastructure uses of that gateway site, just to make sure we're all up to date, um, with the current community vision.
And that's, you're doing that with Tom, did you say?
Yes, Tom and our community development department at the city.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then we also want to do a little bit more research around kind of what some of the identified uses for that property could be so that we have a strong understanding of what, um, is possible and what would be interested in having on that site. We would then try to target developers who fall into those categories of housing that's been identified or, um, commercial developments for that property. Um, you know, figure out some of, some problems associated with the case where I shouldn't, I use problems in my packet, but not problems, but just challenges, which is of course our gateway conditional housing program, making sure people find their housing before we, um, start construction on that site. Making sure the current infrastructure is in a space where developers will be attracted and want to come bid on the property. Um, making sure our zoning and development codes align with what we want to do on the property, et cetera. Um, figuring out what incentives are available to really just knowing how we can really sell and make sure this project sees itself through. This will be our third RFP for, for this project. Um, and then target specific developers, um, for that RFP, um, to really try to get that specific interest on the thing. And then to go ahead and distribute it and, and hopefully we find a good candidate.
Um, and you, the expected timeline for this?
You know, I would say I needed to talk with Tom to see his, business, but I'd say about three months, we could fast track it absolutely. Um, but given that the gateway transitional housing program, you know, is going to continue, um, for at least the current foreseeable future, you know, want to just take our time and really do this thoroughly. Unless there's any other things, um, that are pressing or an opportunity that we want to take advantage of.
Um, well, when I look at this, I did have a couple of questions. Um, and one of them was, uh, in the bullet point two, um, it, it almost appears that we are looking, um, for maybe a revisioning of that site and I might be reading too much into it. What, um, can, can you describe what you're really look, what's the objective of, of that second bullet point?
Yeah. So that section is really us making sure that we understand the stated community vision. Um, I think our community is in a lot of visioning of the site, um, both through Salazar's work currently, as well as what happened prior to the fire. So really that bullet is just about, you know, us as staff, making sure we fully understand um, what is meant in that community vision and how we can help make it happen. So I would not say community revisioning, it would just be, um, us getting up to speed. I'm what's wanted.
So, so that when a developer who would, who I would assume will get this information in part through the RFP process, when they make a proposal, you'll be able to filter it or vet it through that lens. Is that what I'm gathering?
Yeah.
Okay. That's great. And then, you know, I, I expressed concerns at the time that, uh, when we, um, engaged Salazar for that process, that it seemed redundant, given the process that we'd already gone through, um, at the gateway. But, um, so much of what they did was really just throughout the entire burn scar. Um, and so I, I just, you having taken a look at all that process that we went through, um, it is, is what cells are providing for us going to be useful in the gateway site and then out into the rest of the community. Like, does that, does that seem like a kind of a, a matrix that we're going to be able to use?
Um, I'm hopeful. Yes. Admittedly, I have not dived deep enough into the Salazar's report yet. Um, to, to share an opinion, um, on that. You know, I will say really what these first two bullet points in the, in the staff report are, is to do that deep dive, um, to make sure that it'll, it all aligns.
Great. I, and you know, that's actually gets, that actually makes a finer point of what I'm getting to is that, um, and the, the work is valuable and it was certainly a great process and, and so is the original community vision and how, how to dovetail those things or really overlay those two things, I think is a concern that I'd like to see us bring value to those two processes by really, but really taking time to do that, to, to overlay those two processes. And, and you certainly have the right team for that with, uh, our own community development and Tom and, and yourself. I think you guys can accomplish that. I'm hoping to see something, a presentation on, on, on some sort of product of that at some point. Do you think that's possible or?
Yes. I mean, we will absolutely keep the board along with every step of the way of development. Since ultimately, um, it is a board decision, both around, you know, the RFP language as well as who we select. Um, from the RFP process.
I have to admit, I'm, maybe I'm just a little excited to see, you know, how, how those two really great processes, um, can come together in, in your hand, in your guys' hands. You know what I mean? Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Well, good. That's, that's, uh, what I wanted to hear. And so, um, I, I, I still, um, I want to go back to the timeline thing. Um, I appreciate that we want to take our time, um, but do you see this happening in 2023?
Yes. I, I mean, I see it being accomplished, um, in this fiscal year.
In this fiscal year. Oh, good news. Okay. Great. Um, all right. That's it for me. One of the fun things about having this kind of an agenda is we get a little discussion time. I really appreciate that. Anybody else? All right. Thanks, Jordan.
Yeah. Do you mind if I try to get a, a poll of the room around shifting outside of the second Tuesday or the fourth Tuesday? Okay. Again, general thumbs up. I will go ahead and check with the board members who are not present tonight, just to see if there is a, uh, if they're able to as well.
So when is planning? The third Tuesday?
I think, ooh, let me look. Have you, do you know off the top of your head? I want to see the fourth Tuesday of the month. I think, ooh, let me look. Patrick, do you know off the top of your head? I want to see the fourth Tuesday of the month. Every fourth Tuesday.
So I'm out on the fourth Tuesday. I'm pre- I'm pre-scheduled.
We're going to take, we're going to take every week of your month with with sort of public service. Tuesday.
Yeah, are you wanting to move it uh, in a week away from a council meeting? Is that your objective? Okay, all right.
Yeah. Um, and this, you know, could be a a temporary thing too, if need be, if it ends up that the first Tuesday works best for everyone. Even just having this shift the next couple of months would be very helpful for me.
Member Clark?
Yeah, uh, I could do the second Tuesdays. Does anyone have conflicts on the second Tuesday of the month?
Okay, great. I will check with the other board members and hopefully that works for them.
Well, I hope this uh, I hope this offers you a little wind at your back.
Me too.
Um, okay, uh. Is that everything for your um, your director's report?
It is.
Are there any items from the board? Anything we'd like to see on a uh, queue up in a future. Tour meeting? All right, any word in communications? There are none. Uh, so at this time, uh, which is. Six forty-four, I'll adjourn uh, the urban renewal meeting. Thank you, everybody. Great, great meeting.
Thanks, all.
Thanks, everyone.